So the candidates today are Andrew Workman, current acting president and vice president of the Old Clare City Council, and Terry Weld, current city council member. We have seven prepared questions and then we'll take questions from the floor as time permits. Each candidate will have three minutes to answer the questions and we will flip a coin.
Oh, we didn't flip a coin. We can flip a coin now.
You can flip a coin now.
Figure who goes first.
To decide who goes first, so.
Somebody have a coin in the box.
I don't have a coin.
I'm gonna say Terry's home team.
What's your call it?
Your home team.
My home team?
Yeah.
There we go.
Terry, you're gonna call it?
Sure.
Okay, so first question, remember you have three minutes to answer. And it's going to be around the clock and hold up the signs. So first question, pretty easy. Please tell us about your background and why you are running for city council president.
Good morning and thank you all for joining us here today. My name is Terry Weld and I'm running for city council president. Been a council member for the past two years and prior to that I served on the planning commission for six years. The last three of those years as the planning commission chair. Got involved with city governing at that time and really came to enjoy it. Became a part of my life and a passion that continues to grow. I have spent the last thirty years building two businesses into successes. The first being Rooligans in downtown Eau Claire, which I owned and operated for twelve years. It still continues to thrive today. The last eighteen years I spent as a realtor here in the Chippewa Valley. Built that into a very successful real estate business as well. I've sold over a hundred and forty million dollars in real estate in the last eighteen years. And as a lot of you know, that's only possible by the importance of referrals and repeat business. Another way that those referrals and those repeat businesses, repeat customers keep coming back is because of the job that I do. I work hard and dependable and reliable and trusted and compassionate and creative. All the characteristics that make a business successful and I've led that life for the last thirty years. My intention is to carry forward those characteristics as leader and as president of our city council. I believe that as a council we have to be mindful that there are seventy thousand people that live in this community. That all have needs and wants and we need to make sure that we're conscious of those needs. And always looking out for all segments of our community. So I'll leave with those ideas in mind. I feel that I am an independent thinker. I believe in common sense. I believe in leading by example. I believe in supporting those that we've entrusted. So I believe with my experiences both living in this community for the last forty-five years and understanding what this community means to me and to my family and to all of you, I will continue to work hard and look forward to serving as your president for the next year.
Thank you, Terry. Andrew?
Thank you. Thank you and I want to again thank the realtors for having us this evening, this morning, and Chippewa Valley home builders as well for your role in bringing together this forum. My name is Andrew Workman. I am the current acting president of the Old Clare City Council and have served for ten years on the city council. I grew up on a organic dairy farm up in Osceola, Wisconsin, six hundred acres. My family still owns the farm. But I've talked about in my campaign, we lived in the Appalachian hills in my early childhood. Grew up in real poverty. And that's something that I've brought here on this campaign trail. Because it's something that I find is important to our success as a community. That we focus on issues related to poverty and affordability. I came to this community for university and ended up staying. I worked for the few charitable trusts as a policy consultant, actually supporting our national parks. And have for the last ten years. And so, you know, both as a business owner and as someone who's advocated on federal policy, I bring that experience as well as my experience on city council to this role. Now, I would say over the last decade that I've been on city council, we've seen changing community. And we've seen three thousand new jobs created. We have folks coming back to our community who are excited to be a part of it. And I think that's because of our investments in our quality of life and the amenities that make this a community where people want to live and raise a family and have career. And so, I'm proud of that success. I also know that we have to go forward. And we focused on the fact that forty-six percent in our community are living paycheck to paycheck. And we still have folks that will be sleeping on our streets tonight. And that's why I'm proud that you've invited me here this evening. Sorry, this morning. I don't want people thinking that. But no, this idea of how do we help create affordable homes for folks? And how do we make sure that everyone can afford that? And part of it is the success of our community. That if we have affordable housing in our community, then we're gonna have people who are more likely to be able to partake in all the other things that make us a great community. Because we can't, in my opinion, we can't have, I believe it's roughly thirteen percent of our community putting fifty percent of their paycheck every month into their rent and their mortgage. That's just not gonna work long term. So the thing that I've been focusing on are affordable housing. This campaign, I've also been focused on how do we improve and get more participation in our neighborhoods, strengthen our neighborhoods. And the last thing is sustainability. Can I focus on sustainability? So thank you for having me this morning.
Okay, question number two goes to Terry. In your opinion, what role should the city council play regarding the existing home, new home construction and remodeling industry within the Chippewa Valley?
Yeah, obviously, you know, our community continues to grow. And the demand for housing continues to grow with it. And certainly that we've realized now more than ever that the supply to meet that demand isn't there. As a community, you know, I guess we need to be mindful that as a city council, we need to be conscious of this shortage. I feel it's our role to do everything we can to create more supply, create more housing in all price ranges, in all, meeting all the needs of our community. So I guess, I feel that it's important that, you know, we look at opportunities that we have as a governing body that can help builders and those that wanna develop and those that are remodeling and, you know, it starts with our codes, building codes and zoning. The opportunity is there for us to reduce the minimum lot sizes, to reduce setbacks, to reduce the parking requirements. You know, those kinds of things that we can do to create higher density. We're looking at areas that maybe we're infilling lots in areas of this town or neighborhoods that already exist. And then we're also looking at expanding and pushing out beyond where our city services already lie. But again, trying to create maybe smaller lots, smaller homes, and in turn, more affordable homes for those that want to be a homeowner. And certainly, you know, the same holds true for the developers that are looking at the multifamily properties. So as a city council, those are some of the things that we can do. We can certainly try and make it more efficient for our builders in regards to permitting and, you know, at least trying to save them some time. Whether they're sitting idle waiting for re-inspections or waiting for approval on site plans. We need to be, you know, mindful of that in our processes and how we're doing and certainly encourage that feedback from you. And I guess that's my intentions are to make sure that we're doing that at all times. I see there's some other questions that they get into that in a little more detail, so I'll leave that for then. Certainly, you know, we can do things. We can be better at what we're doing now and hopefully in turn, create safer, healthier housing for everyone and affordable housing.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you. Yeah, appreciate this question and, you know, as Terry said, a lot of these questions kind of work together, you know, and how we build more homes. And, you know, I think the first thing again is that we have to make it easier for home builders to be able to build homes. That's the bottom. And, you know, we've again looked at recommendations that have come forward about streamlining our process, our fees and reducing our fees. We've looked at our zoning laws and how we can make that simpler. We have another question down line about working in neighborhoods that kind of falls into that same category. I also think that we have to look at what our infill opportunities are. And that's another thing that we've just identified at the city councils that we're gonna do inventory of what all of our opportunities could be for new buildings. And I would say that, you know, we've already sort of started on that process. We have a number of projects that are slated for downtown even. But I know that our older neighborhoods are also beginning to set up the mechanisms for which to help, you know, both rebuild and remodel, but also, you know, help support reconstruction areas that may be vacant and to be filled. We, a few months ago, launched the new LITA program that looks at the first-time home buyers and making sure that they have affordable loans to be able to remodel in older neighborhoods. And our city plays a role in helping to connect those pieces as well and make sure that our housing folks are connected and making sure that that information is out there. If you're a new homeowner, that you know that that's an opportunity. And I would say last of all, you know, we again need to just focus on what it is that we can do to make it easier. And so, as a candidate, I've talked about, I'm open to, you know, what our city councils can do to work with the home builders to make sure that opportunities are there. Because we have demand and we need to be serious about meeting that demand.
Awesome. Thank you. Question number three to Terry. The Chippewa Valley Housing Task Force has presented recommendations on how best to address the affordable housing challenges the city is currently facing. What role, if any, should the city council play in implementing these recommendations?
Is it alternating?
Just back.
It's supposed to be alternating who answers the question first.
Okay. I'll leave it on this one. So this is another big question. I think first of all, I have to point out that, you know, this task force that, you know, has been working since summer just came to city council, recommended thirty different policies that we can take part in as a city. There's sort of a bucket of short-term, maybe six months, six months to one year, and then two-year policy goals to help us create more affordable housing. This is, again, with the fact that we are a destination community and we have high demand. This is an incredibly important challenge that our community faces right now, which is making sure that we have affordable homes. And we have, again, I pointed to the numbers that we had thirteen percent of people in our community that were paying actually over fifty percent of their entire income to housing. And I don't have to tell you what that translates into. So we've taken these, we've already started down the path of identifying these policy solutions that our city council can have. I think one of the biggest ones is the fact that we have negotiation power often. And so, I look at many of our downtown development, much of our downtown development that has happened. And still more to come. I would say there's more new developments slated, at least in our downtown, than has already happened. And I think our city council and our city has to take a strong role in negotiating agreements that benefit everyone. And so, that is saying that if there's a new project coming, that we're actually being proactive and asking that certain percent of that development be in affordable housing. I've also said that we should have a commission that specifically focuses on affordable housing and takes these recommendations and make sure that they're a part of our policy process. So when developments come forward, that this commission would actually help focus on whether all of the different grants have been maximized, whether we've looked at the opportunities for affordability and everything that we can to make sure that affordable housing is part of the mix. And I would say lastly, that we have to be advocates as local government. We have to make sure that we're on the forefront of being advocates for people who need it most. And so, you know, again, I think the idea of affordability in our community for housing is our most important issue that we have to focus on. And, you know, it's a challenge that I look forward to working with all of you on in the coming years because it's something that will make our community a better place. I think we've already come a long way, but I know that our next chapter is gonna include.
Thank you, Andrew. Terry, same question?
Yeah, thank you. As Andrew mentioned, we did see the results in the report from the task force, which again, eighty different, eighty people from throughout the Alton and then the Chippewa Valley and Eau Claire volunteered their time and effort and thoughts to create this report. Very well done and very well prepared and very well laid out with those goals and that two-year plan. And, you know, that are, you know, I think attainable goals as a community. Certainly, our role as city council is to try and make sure that they are attainable. And if they're not, how can we improve the chances of those goals being met? I think that they took into account the, you know, the different aspects of the challenges that our community faces. Certainly not just in inventory and affordable homes, but also the other factors that play into that, including our wages and job opportunities and retainment and keeping people here after they finish school. And then also creating the opportunities for people to get more involved and participate more in the trades. Whether it's the tech school or internships or either starting at our high school where you guys are actively working with these kids, trying to get them involved with our trades. Which is really where we're lacking too in regards to, you know, the supportive industry in regards to construction and maintenance. So, you know, I think as long as we continue to be mindful of that as a council and stay on task with the recommendations by the task force, I think we can make this happen. And I think we can actually accomplish, you know, the goals of everyone and still, you know, always in the back of our mind, you know, having that constant idea that we have to continue to build, build, build. I'm a strong believer in supply and demand. I'm a strong believer that for every new home we build or every new apartment unit that we build, we create a vacancy somewhere else. And each vacancy continues to add to that supply and allows our demand to be met. And I think as long as you guys keep building and our community keeps building at all levels, eventually we'll be able to accomplish that and hopefully meet that demand that, you know, that we so need right now.
Great. Thank you, Terry. One current challenge facing local home builders and developers is a proposed project fits the qualifications set forth by Old Clare city staff and planning commission. However, the qualified project faces delays from the city council due to local neighborhood opposition. This oftentimes leads to added project costs and uncertainty of approval for the builder and/or developer. As president of the city council, how could this situation be rectified while taking into consideration the neighborhood opposition, but at the same time creating a pro-housing culture within the city limits?
Yeah, you know, it's a continual battle, you know, and it's something that I keep, you know, thinking about and trying to find ways that we can, you know, I guess, starting with notification. And, you know, when these proposals are brought before our planning department and the application process has been started and, you know, that when these notifications are going out, are they being mailed out early enough? And are they covering a wide range of the neighborhood or those that they feel are being affected by this new development? So that there is enough time for people to react and ask questions and become involved as much as they possibly can. I think what we end up having happen is that people are not aware of it or they're not, you know, taking the time to, you know, and that's not something we often will do is, you know, look in the paper where they're posting these public notices. And, you know, it's just not a common page for individuals to go to. And so oftentimes, they find out about it at the last minute and then, you know, they're concerned and they wanna get involved and then we have a public discussion and all of a sudden, there's a delay because maybe we need to have more time to look at or maybe we need to allow more time for the neighborhood to be heard. But in the end, it ends up causing, as mentioned, a delay for the developer and the builder and additional cost. And what that means is more additional cost to the purchaser, to the buyer, to the tenant. Because those costs, you know, have to be passed along. So it doesn't serve us any good by delaying and letting these projects get, you know, sidetracked for whether it's a week or a month. It makes it difficult for our builders and our developers. So I think the notification is a huge thing that we can really take a look at. We're working on making it better, but certainly we can do a better job than we are now. I think that we need to make sure that our zoning and our codes are clear and neighborhoods and our neighborhood associations understand what they are and what they say and what's permissible and what's not. And also, they need to understand what our intentions are. Again, we're trying to create more healthy and safe housing, you know, at higher density just because that's the trend now. We need to fill in these areas that aren't completely developed. And so, if we do that and we work the neighborhoods continually throughout the year, not just when there's a project that's being developed, but at all times. And that's my intention too, is to meet with our neighborhood associations on a regular basis and keep them aware of what's coming up and what potentially could be happening and making sure that they're reaching out to their neighborhoods and letting them know, you know, that these are discussions that we're having, these are things that are coming up. Make sure you let your neighbors and your members of your association know.
Thank you. So this was something that came up in our affordable housing hearing. We held the first-ever hearing on affordable housing last fall. And actually, we had a number of developers who talked about that there was a slowdown in terms of neighborhoods sometimes, neighbors weren't necessarily in favor of projects and how that plays out. We also heard that we had a developer there that talked about how, why is it that across the street from me, there's a sixplex, but I'm not allowed to build something similar? And yet, we're in the same corridor and in the same neighborhood. That makes no sense. And I think these are the challenges that we're gonna have to work through, you know, moving forward. I, first of all, want to point to the fact that over the last decade, we've actually, probably even the last six years, we actually expanded our notification system because of this very issue. And I think we may have to look at that again. But what we did is we said, we wanna have a greater radius around where a project happens. I think we also, we didn't used to put up the signs on the lot so people could take information. Not sure how well that works, but that was something that we started doing. And then the other one is what projects qualify and which ones don't. So we expanded that definition as well. And I worked with council member Dave Dux and sort of a leader on that at the time to make sure that that was an expanded notification because we were having problems with it before. So that's one thing. I think the second thing is the strong neighborhoods. And that you have neighborhoods that are invested and know that their decisions and involvement help and map and that they're being listened to. And so, as someone who's a longtime member of the North Riverfront Association and now the East Hill, you know, without a doubt, if you have a neighborhood association that's proactive and in place, they have a much greater say, you know, over what happens in the neighborhood. And I think the last thing is this idea of turning this, what I call the NIMBY culture to YUNBY culture. And that's a yes-in-my-backyard attitude that neighborhoods and neighborhood leaders realize and understand the importance of the challenge that our community faces in building more homes. And that they get on board with, you know, the, I think, what is a changing culture right now, which is how do we build and how do we build affordable? And that they're a part of that process. And as a president of the city council, I will make sure that we're opening up those lines of dialogue with our neighborhood leaders. I know many of that personally. And, you know, I look forward to the opportunity to really have conversations, not with just our neighborhood presidents, but with their entire neighborhoods about the role that they can proactively play in helping us to build more and build more affordably.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
An additional challenge facing our members is the permitting and inspection processes. Is there a way this process can be streamlined to benefit all parties?
So this is another, this is part of the recommendations package that we actually got from the Affordable Housing Task Force, which looks at how do we streamline and better, and make our process simple. I think that's really the crux of it. And, you know, one of the things we've already looked at is the fees and the role that fees play. If they're cumbersome, how do we actually lower that, change that, make sure that, you know, that we have an affordable structure of fees. I think in terms of streamlining, I'd actually like to see, especially on projects that are either infill in our older neighborhoods or looking at affordable housing, that we're actually creating a more expedited process for those. I think that developers should be rewarded for helping to figure out some of our most pressing housing challenges that we face. And so, I'm open to that and that's something that I've been talking about. You know, I think beyond that, it's something that I'm all ears. Like, I would love to have those conversations moving forward with our housing task force about what are the ways that we can make this work better and help builders really, you know, be able to do more housing. And I think, you know, getting back to our hearing last fall, this was one of the challenges that was pointed out along with some of our challenges around our workforce. And I want to come back to that too because we heard that really training and folks who, you know, are skilled in the trades is something that is in high demand. And it's actually part of the barrier that building faces right now. And so, that as long as with, you know, a streamlined process is something that I'll be focused on as, you know, if elected city council president.
You know, several things that we can do as a council. One, it starts with budgeting, making sure that the staffing needs are there to meet the demands of you. To make sure that we have enough people working for the city, you know, that can get out and take care of, you know, your needs at the site anyways. So there's not that delay there. The permitting, you know, process, I agree. I think, you know, when we look at our fee schedule, we just amended, made some changes to this past December. And you look at all the different licensing fees and how much it breaks down into, you know, twenty or thirty or forty different fees to make an improvement to a home or to build a new home. you know, twenty or thirty or forty different fees to, to make an improvement or to a home or to build a new home. You know, certainly it, it would make sense to us to, to see if we can consolidate that and again, make it more efficient for you. But, you know, number one, staffing needs, making sure that, that we have the, the people there. And that starts with us and making sure that the funds are there to, to, to hire those people. Number two, you know, we need to sit down with you guys. You guys know this better than we do. You guys are the developers, you're the builders, you have the frustrations. And you need to let us know what they are. And if it means, you know, meeting with us as, as council members, um, you know, or as, or as planning commission, or staff, or all three, I, I think it's important that, that you guys give us, give us your thoughts. And I know that you are, some of you have been very, you know, outspoken and, and we appreciate that. At the same time, you know, we need to actually come up with something that, that makes sense to you and to the community. Obviously, we have costs too, um, you know, to, to make sure that we can, um, get out there and take care of these inspections in a timely fashion. And, um, and so we want to make sure that, that it's, you know, equitable for both parties, um, both you and, and the community. And again, all of that translates back to the purchaser, to the tenant. Because, you know, if we can reduce these costs, you know, then hopefully that passes along to, to the, uh, to the user and in turn, again, it's a win-win for everybody. But, you know, certainly again, one of those things as a community we can always be better at. So looking forward to, to participating with you and working with you in that regard.
Thank you. Um, the city budget plays an important role in property taxes, which in turn can hinder the ability of residents to own a home. Keep in mind the impact on property taxes. How will you make budget decisions? If decisions need to be made about what can be funded and what isn't, how will you make that determination?
Yeah, taxes, um, we, you know, and I've, I've said this every time we talk about our budget. You know, it's, the biggest thing that I've learned in, in being in city governing is, is taxation and budgets and, and the reality of, and, you know, we look at how much we're allowed to tax and how much we're allowed to spend, um, based on levies that are set by the state. And then we continue to grow at a learning rate and we continue to develop more and more of our city. Um, and, and, you know, increasing, you know, more and more demands. Um, I met with the, the police, uh, union last night. They talk about, you know, more and more events that, that every year we see planned in our community, whether it's in our parks or festivals or music events. All these things put demands on, on all these different departments. And, you know, those are good things, obviously. We want to continue to be prosperous. We want to continue to grow. We want, um, your businesses to continue to thrive as developers and builders and so on. But, um, you know, it's, it's difficult to meet all the demands that, that our community has. I think that, you know, the process for me and, and where we have our challenges, my opponent and I, is, is, is how we, we, we make these changes to our budget and how we actually, you know, sit down and, and look at what is gonna make the greatest impact, you know, the greatest amount of, you know, citizens in O'Clare. And how can we make sure that all of our dollars that we are spending are maximized to the fullest? And so in this regard, you know, in regards to taxes and, and, you know, what we can do to, to try and maintain that level. You know, and I think, you know, we really do run our community on a shoestring at this point. I mean, it's, as I mentioned, difficult, but I think at the same time, we have a, a city manager that, that's conscious of, of our costs and our spending. We have department heads that are conscious of our costs and our spending. And that, and that carries forward to us. And I think as a council, we, we need to be the ones that are even more fiscally responsible at all times. And I think there are, there's, there's money that we're spending that isn't really being, you know, spent wisely. And I don't think it's reflective of the needs of everyone in our community. And I think that's the answer to at least maintaining our taxes so housing is affordable to everyone. And it is, you know, uh, people are capable of owning a home and not being deterred from that, from that right and that, and that privilege and that hope because of the, the inability to pay the property taxes. And the difficult balance, I will continue to work on and work together.
Thank you. And, and, you know, this, this is something that comes up at pretty much every single one of the forums that we do. And it, and it's, you know, it comes back to this, the fact that, um, our, our community is growing and it, and it has been growing. And it's, um, we actually saw record growth in two thousand and seventeen that, um, allowed for, so our formula right now allows that if there's an increase in overall valuation in our community, then our property tax percent could go up. The problem is, is that year after year, we're squeezed by the state. And so we get less state funding, less shared revenue, uh, to pay for the, uh, services that we once did. Uh, we have less than half of the shared revenue we did in the early nineties from the state. And so the only way that, as, as Terry pointed out, the only way we can fund our police, our fire, our parks, um, is, is to make sure that we're putting, you know, we have to make it up some way. And we put in our property tax. That's the only place that our city is allowed to raise taxes. So, you know, that's, that's putting us in a hard spot. Uh, and I, and I would say that our city, our city and our budget, um, is lean as it is. Uh, you know, we've really cut in many years, um, this, in the last few years, in the first year they were actually able to add money. Um, and granted, we added, uh, to the budget, uh, this two thousand and nineteen budget has a nearly million dollar increase for our police department. But, and our fire, our fire and EMS got four hundred thousand new dollars. But keep in mind, it's just to keep up with the current, uh, service demands. It's not adding new positions. It's because of healthcare costs, um, and, and benefits and all the things and, and wages increasing. So we're able to keep up with our current service demands, but only because we get record growth. In terms of our budget, uh, the way that our budget, uh, works, and my, and my opponent knows this, is that, uh, our city manager delivers a balanced budget. And we pass a balanced budget at city council. We pass a balanced budget. And, and by law, we have to. And, uh, if city council members want to make any changes to the budget, it comes in November. That's how our budget is done. And our city manager has made it clear that as executive, he's presenting a balanced budget. And as legislators, if we, whatever we pass, uh, has to also be balanced. So all of our amendments come at the eleven dollar. That is the process. And I've talked long, I've talked many times about how this, that process is not a good process. Uh, throughout the whole budget, I actually brought that up. I'm not certain that, uh, my opponent did. I brought up how this is not a process that is working. Either way, when city council made changes to the budget, we only changed a half of a percent, even less, of what's proposed. So in this last budget, it, it's, you know, we have over a million dollar budget, our hundred million dollar budget at our, at our city. We, we don't even change, uh, even, you know, three hundred thousand dollars of that. So to put it in perspective, um, you know, the, the, the budget that we pass is something that has to reflect the needs of people in the community we represent. Uh, and I feel like our budget does that. Um, I'm at the end of my three minutes here. Was I only three minutes? When I get to the budget.
Okay, so last question. Um, what opportunities do you feel are currently available to the city council but are underutilized at this time? And if developed, they would enhance, improve and strengthen relations? That would foster growth and advancement within the Chippewa Valley housing industry?
So I think there's two things that, that, that come to mind. The first is, what is the role of our city council in terms of helping meet the demands, uh, for training? And, 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 uh, trades? And what can we do as a city to support? Now, that's, this is something that, um, has traditionally been a part of the technical college system, our, our high schools. Um, and, and is something that, um, you know, I think we've heard feedback, which is, what can the city do in taking a bigger role and actually helping, um, to provide more skilled labor, uh, so we can build more homes? Um, and so that's something that I think is an opportunity that we're not, uh, necessarily, that we haven't necessarily looked at. And is an opportunity that we need to look at and be proactive in. I think the other opportunity is, uh, how do we make sure that we're incentivizing good jobs in our community? And high paying jobs? And that's another piece of this is, you know, I've always felt that if we invest in our quality of life, that is gonna be the number one indicator of whether folks want to start a business here, want to move here, want to come to school here. The idea of being in a community, uh, that has high quality of life and amenities that follow that is something that I think our, our city has to continue to invest in. So, you know, again, it's this idea, we've, we've talked about affordability of housing. If you have a job that is paying, you know, ten bucks an hour or twelve bucks an hour, your ability to actually even make rent, let alone potentially buy a home, is severely compromised. And so again, wages have to be a part of the discussion. In fact, in our affordable housing, uh, recommendation, wages was, uh, one of the number one things that, that we've looked at as a city, which is, if we're not, if we're not focused on, uh, living wages as a community, then we're losing out on the ability for people to actually be able to afford a home, um, and, and afford to put a roof over their head. So.
Can I get the tie from the budget? Go back to it?
Uh, you know, I think, um, I, I think we, we do a good job. We have been doing a good job of, of the quality of life portion of, of bringing people to O'Clare here. And, and, you know, and I think it's, it's a strategy that, that we see being successful throughout the country. You know, there, there has to be incentives, um, for people to want to move to O'Clare. And so we look at music and culture and, and our trails and our bike paths and our using our waterways. And, you know, how as a community can we continue to enhance our parks and everything that goes with that? Because those are parts of the reason, or a big part of the reasons that people decide to stay here. Um, obviously if they decide to move here or, or continue to live here after they've graduated, then, then we need the housing to make sure that, that they have a place to live and that, you know, it fits their needs and they get to be a part of the community that, that, that they're growing to love. So we started looking at now what, what other things can we do to enhance, you know, further development? We started looking at transportation. And, you know, can we make changes to our transportation, um, that would enhance, uh, certain areas of, that maybe aren't fully developed now, um, that, that would improve opportunities for more building, uh, and more housing? And yet still, um, allow them the, the, the luxury or the convenience and maybe not having to need two cars anymore. Maybe they can be, you know, maybe a bio one vehicle. Maybe they're on a bus route. Maybe they can ride their bikes to work. And so more business and, and, and jobs that we can bring closer to, to housing is, is, is one thing that we can continue to be, to be better at, um, and make sure that we're mindful of. You know, economic development is a big part of, of any community. Certainly, you know, another thing that we can be better at, um, is finding ways to make sure that we can recruit more industry into our, our city. And certainly that brings higher paying jobs and, and more people buying homes and more people moving and either downsizing or upsizing. So I think it's important that, you know, as a city, that we're constantly conscious of that and working towards, um, you know, greater economic development. And, and I mentioned this earlier, certainly another thing that we can be better at is, again, listening to you. And you guys have ideas. You're creative. You're, you're in business. You've been successful because of that. And so if there are things that you feel we can be doing to enhance greater development, you know, then please pass that along to us so that, that we can facilitate that. I think, you know, as a community, we'll, we'll continue to work hard, um, with all those ideas in mind. And we're gonna continue to, to grow and uncover that O'Clare's, you know, can be a great place to live for, for, for many, many years, forever. This is where I plan to spend, uh, my retirement years and, and, uh, I look forward to, to doing those as, as your city council president.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, we'd like to open it up and see if there are any questions from the floor. Be the same format as before. Does anyone have any question?
This is not really housing related, but nationally or political environment seems to just be getting worse and worse and called partisan minds and, and struggling along in partisanship versus doing what's best for everyone. How do you feel the council and O'Clare handles that? Do you feel like they work together well? Or are they very good or are you struggling fighting against one another?
You know, I don't, I don't think we're fighting amongst each other. I think, um, I think overall, and I, I talk about this a lot, I, I, I think there should be no partisanship on our, on our council. I think that, you know, the intent there, when it was created and, and still today is, is defined on our, on our nomination papers and, you know, that are circulated, it is a non-partisan role of this community. And, and that, that, that is the only way that it can really truly work. You know, when we create that balance of, you know, representing everybody and everyone's needs and everyone's wants and leaving all of the political platform issues aside. And so I think as a council, it, it's important that, that, you know, we go into every legislative session with the idea that we're in, you know, every decision we make and every action that we take is, is a true representation of, of power of community is, um, you know, built and grown. I spend a lot of time, um, in our meetings, um, introducing, um, compromise. Again, trying to bring it back to the middle on some of the initiatives that were brought before us. But it, but it's, this, this is the changes going on as, as, as mentioned, across the country. You know, there, there are, you know, there is a new, a new, uh, idea in regards to politics and whether or not they should be involved in our, in our community, um, governing process. I, I think is maybe where we differ a little bit. And I, our role is to, is to make sure that we're taking care of you and your wants and needs. And only that. Our assemblymen, our state senators, our congressmen, you know, Madison and Washington is, is where these other political issues should be legislated. And here in O'Clare, we should be focused on, you know, what's important and what matters most to us. And that's the way that I intend to lead and, and be mindful of and constantly trying to bring everything back to a middle, trying to find a happy meeting ground and, and, you know, ideally, you know, with, with, with one intention, making sure that it best serves the community. And so, um, I'll continue to work hard on that as a council president.
Thank you. Thanks for this question. And, um, you know, I think first of all, that, um, no matter what level it is, uh, I don't care if it's in your neighborhood association, your city council, your state, your federal, even your family, even your friends. Uh, politics is what we do. Um, and, you know, the, the idea that somehow we're a politics-free zone is, is not, is not the case. And, and, you know, I think, I've heard this charge of partisanship come, uh, you know, over and over. And I, I've always said, well, what, what issue are you talking about? Because when you actually look at the different issues, um, you know, then I could say, okay, so you don't agree that we need a living wage? Or you don't agree that, um, you know, we need positions at the library to help people who are homeless? Well, okay, let's have a discussion about that. But to say that it's partisan because we're tackling some of these issues, um, you know, I, I think that, that rings hollow. And I, and I think again, that's not the biggest issue our community faces. Partisanship, uh, you know, is, is far, far down on the list of things that we need to be concerned about. We have, um, our affordable housing crisis right now. We're trying to figure out how we're, uh, gonna make sure that, uh, we don't have three hundred children in our schools who are considered homeless. And so, you know, I brought, brought, tried to bring this conversation back to, uh, the issues that actually impact people's lives. And what are we doing, uh, as a community to make sure we're actually impacting folks' lives? And we'll have policy disagreements. And that's politics. And, and I think we have to be honest about that. Not only that, I will point out again, is that on almost every issue we work on, not everyone agrees. Let, let's not, let's be honest about that. Is, is whether it was the jail expansion downtown, whether it was the confluence, whether to even build there, whether to offer the incentives. You know, those are decisions that not everyone in the community agreed with. And, and, and that's part of politics. And so I think what, what it comes down to at the end of the day for me is that regardless of whether you might have a difference on a policy, is that we're elevating our conversation, uh, in a respectful way. And we're, and we're, you know, figuring out a way whether, you know, as a council president or as a council member, that we say, we may vote differently on this one, but we saw thirty-two agenda items left. And we're gonna figure out a way to work together on them to make sure they work. And that's the thing about our local city council. And that's the thing about our local city council is, no matter what, no matter what philosophies you bring to the table, whether it's conservative, liberal, or something else, we have to work together to make sure that we're solving our problems.
Any other question?
I have. Go ahead ladies first.
Oh, you go ahead.
Okay. Couple of things both of you said that concerned me. One of you said that owning a house was right and that had to be developed by the government. I disagree with that totally. It's not right. It's privileged perhaps. If you wanna own a home, it shouldn't be a government visor for you. The other guys talked about living wage. Do you feel it's the city council's place in our community to tell a businessman what he has to pay someone to work? I find that a very slippery slope. Yes, there is a labor shortage and the supply and demand should drive that, not a city council. So, do you guys feel the living wage is someplace the city council needs to be sticking their nose? On private enterprise? That's my question.
I'll go, I'll go, I'm trying to go first on both of those. We'll get through. So, we may have a disagreement on this issue. And part of it is that, you know, we have, our country has seen huge success. And, you know, we're the richest country in the world right now. And yet, we look around our community and we see people working jobs where, you know, we have, we have abbey vans, we have drivers of our pair of transit who start out at eight fifty an hour, or someone who's working at retail, you know, retail starting at ten fifty or something. And to me, you know, that speaks volumes about, you know, how are we, how are we gonna have jobs where folks can actually afford to pay for housing or to pay for the increasing cost of healthcare or gas or food? And that's where I do think that government can have a role in saying, "At the very minimum, this is what you ought to be getting paid." Now, as a community, we raised our minimum wage in two thousand and seven, I believe it was, when that was still possible. Now, we don't have that power anymore. The living wage ordinance, which you're probably aware of, was specifically around city employees, contracts that we have in the community, and building and developments. And my feeling is, is, "Look, if people aren't being paid enough and can't make it, you know, maybe government has a role to step in and say, 'This is at least the base of it, that you ought to get paid.'" So, you know, we may have a disagreement on that issue, but I, you know, I respect, I respect your opinion about, you know, what the role of government is in that. I think in terms of moving forward, one thing that we can do as a community is, you know, we have opportunities to actually incentivize and make sure that we're seeing jobs that come to our community that are paying a living wage. When we have a proposal in front of us from a new company and it's, "What are you willing to offer in terms of the Sky Park or any of our other business parks? What are you willing to offer? Free land, tax incentives, et cetera?" We ought to be saying, "Well, what are you gonna be paying?" You know, that should be a forefront of what we're negotiating, is what are you willing to pay? And so, I've talked about how living wage can be a part of that and a part of our discussion. In terms of the, in terms of the home, the home piece, you know, I think, I don't know, I won't go down that road. What I will say is, I think that the basic thing is, we have to figure out a way where, you know, we've identified that a whole lot of folks in our community are paying more than thirty percent of their income to their housing, to their home. And how do we make sure that that's a more affordable proposition? Because right now, that's hurting everyone. We can't, we don't have people who can afford homes. That also translates to people who can't afford their childcare, they can't afford to save, they can't afford to put their kid in college. So, it affects everyone. That's part of the reason I talk about it a lot.
Thank you. Eric?
Yeah, living wage, you know, I guess I've been self-employed my whole life. I've never really had a paycheck. And I've never had my healthcare covered for me. You know, it's always been as a business owner, you know, something that you just, you take on and accept. You know, I'm conscious of wages and what's going on in our community and whether or not it meets, you know, the current growth in our cost of living. So, you know, and certainly, unfortunately, it isn't, you know, across the board meeting. Our wages are not keeping up with our cost of living. And, you know, again, that double-edged sword. We're creating all these successes, we're building a beautiful community. A lot of people wanna move here and be here and live this experience. But at the same time, with that comes higher costs because there is that demand. But, you know, I see it, I see a lot of the discrepancies in the wages changing on their own. You know, I drive by Culvers or CVS and, you know, different businesses that are, you know, showing wages starting at thirteen fifty an hour and healthcare benefits. And I see, you know, I see employees, and you guys see them every day. You know, they're getting eighteen dollars an hour here and they're getting twenty-two dollars an hour in Hudson. And so, you know, we see them going to Hudson because they're getting four more dollars an hour to work for a subcontractor there than they are here. So, eventually, we, you know, as an employer, as a business, you realize you do what you have to do to make that work. And if you didn't come up with that idea or that, you know, realization because we told you to as a city, you came to that realization because you know what you need to do to make sure you have the staff to get the job done. And so, I support that idea. I support that, you know, that market mentality in the sense that, you know, this is a business and it's important that we're mindful of that. At the same time, we are a community that represents everyone and we need to have, you know, compassion towards all income segments. And so, I wanna make sure that as a community, when we're looking at economic development and inviting new businesses here, that, you know, we have a good understanding of what type of wages are we looking at, what will they bring to our community that can help us all grow. Same with the contracts that we award. You know, rather than us stating what the wages must be, but, you know, making a decision, making it part of the whole decision process of, "All right, what services are they gonna provide for us? How good of a job will they continue to do for us? And what kind of wages are they gonna be paying?" And then, as a community, we can weigh all those things and decide, you know, what brings the greatest amount of benefit to us.
Thank you, Eric. Any other questions?
I co-chair the Jonah Affordable Housing Task Force. And as such, we are a member of that larger regional affordable housing task force that has made recommendations to the city council. One of the recommendations that Jonah supported that didn't make the final cut for the recommendations to the city council was the creation of an advisory committee that would look at all development proposals through an affordable housing lens and make recommendations to the city council or the planning commission on how this particular proposal might affect affordable housing in our community. I wanna know, do you support such an advisory committee? And if so, as city council president, what would you do to make it happen?
You know, I guess I'd have to, you know, it was a big part of the discussion this coming in. And I, you know, I wasn't in the writing as far as the recommendations. It was certainly voiced off the advisory committee. You know, where it sits in relation to our planning commission and to our city council and all the different other commissions and committees and boards that are part of our community and part of the decisions that we make on a day-to-day basis. You know, I'd have to see how all that would work and at what process does this advisory committee become a part? You know, we talk about streamlining, we talk about creating efficiencies and trying to make sure that we're mindful of time and what that looks like financially, you know, both for the developer and for the user. But at the same time, I think it's important that there is something there that brings us back to the goal, to make sure that all housing is affordable for all users, for all income levels, for all segments of our community. And maybe that, you know, is a part of our planning commission process or, you know, I guess I'd have to see exactly where and how it fits into that. But certainly, you know, the more people we have involved civically, the more people that we have expressing ideas and thoughts, you know, and in the end, it makes a very strong community. At the same time, we wanna make sure that, you know, we're mindful of all parts of that process. I look forward to this evolving, you know, this whole process. The task force and the recommendations in the next two years and how we make that work. But at the same time, looking at what other things we can do as a council.
Eric?
Thank you, and it's a good question. I think, you know, first of all, just to point out the role of our committees and commissions and boards in our city. And the idea of, you know, bringing experts and bringing, you know, leaders in the industry, bringing neighborhood association leaders and so many more together is important. It's an important part of democracy that you have folks that are stepping up and involved and helping to make the community better. So, I'll give a couple of examples. We have the Waterways and Parks Commission. And they're really looking at, what are we doing to make sure we preserve our rivers and make sure that our parks are an amenity that are valued? And so, you know, our Waterways and Parks Commission, while it is a step that you have to go through if you're building next to a waterway or park, you know, those are, the folks who serve on those boards are given the charge of figuring out as a community, how do we make, how do we value that? And how do we make sure we're valuing it? Our B-PAC, our bicycle pedestrian commission focuses on making sure that we have more rideability in our community, make sure that both pedestrians are safe, cyclists are safe, and other modes of, alternate modes of transportation are safe. And again, that's something that people really value about Eau Claire. We have the second most, the second most miles of bike trails in our community. And it's in no small part to the fact that we have a commission of folks who helped to push for that and advocate for it. And so, you know, I think without a doubt, it would have to be a part of that streamlined process. But the idea of how do we bring a lens of affordability in our community to our building is something I support and would support. And the commission itself, I've actually was the author of one of our commissions, our sustainability commission. So, I have experience actually how to craft legislation to do that. And what it takes also thinking about who are the people that are there? You know, and from all the industry leaders to advocates on affordable housing, you know, to people who are actually living that experience of affordability as well. So, that's what's, I think, important about it, is that we have the different voices at the table who can help us as a community bring that focus. And so, it is something I would support. And, you know, if elected, I'll make sure we move forward on it.
Any other questions?
I don't know exactly what the, how this is supposed to work. But with all of the, with the difficulty in defining the barriers or the city lines, you know, we're in a community where Altoona and Eau Claire are often confused as to which school, Lake Hallie, same thing, Towne and Washington, all of the different smaller communities that are so, excuse me, so close to us. Is there a level of cooperation or maybe it's competition or whatever it is with these other communities that are either challenges or things that we can use to our advantage to help the city of Eau Claire?
And I think, and that's a good question. I think that's especially if it comes to affordability and affordability of this commission. My feeling is, it would, we need to have regional representation. And we need to make sure that, that there's a fair, that there's a fair level playing field across the different communities. Because I think if we're not cognizant of that, then it's gonna create its own challenges in terms of where building happens and what's affordable and what's not. And so, we've talked about, and I had a discussion with our city manager about that, that there has to be, you know, we have to be working closely with Altoona and other local governments in terms of our planning and our zoning and making sure that we're, yeah, creating that level playing field. Because I think you understand that that's, that could be a very challenging thing if it's different across different communities and we're not collaborating on it. So...
Yeah, do you wanna add to that as a planning official?
Yeah, I agree. I think it's important that there is that level playing field throughout the whole Chippewa Valley, the whole metro area to avoid the opportunity of one area being more popular than another because of cost savings or efficiencies or so on and so on. I think, yeah, I think our goal of task force, you know, encompassed the Chippewa Valley as best that it can. And I think, you know, we'll continue to, you know, as a body, a governing body, and also as, you know, the city staff and our city manager, you know, working together with all these communities to make sure that there is a consistency there. So that, you know, it is equal playing ground for everyone when it comes to building and development and just the consistencies of, you know, what is, what is, here is the same, you know, in Altoona and in Towne and Washington. And we start getting into counties now and we get into Hallie and Chippewa. And so, you know, we'll have to, you know, work with that and run more broader, a different scope. Yeah, I think it's the only way we can keep moving forward is to work together.
Any other question?
I have one more. Has to do with, one of you, the two gentlemen have been quoted as, "We are true, we are at this point not a sanctuary city, but we should welcome everybody." As a council president, would you ever vote for Eau Claire becoming a sanctuary city for illegal immigrants?
Is that a question, is there a rule to this decision?
Well, it does because you've got jobs, you've got housing. The whole community is affected by that. And I was told we could ask any question after the initial ones. So, I'd like to know what you'd be thinking on that.
From illegal immigrants or are you talking like migrant labor or legal immigration?
Not legal immigration, not at all.
Illegal immigration.
But a sanctuary city does not include legal immigration. Sanctuary cities for anybody who wants to come regardless, and of course, there's laws, but they're sidestepped for whatever reason. And I'm just curious if Eau Claire, as a city council president, if you would support something like that? That's my question.
You know, for me to answer that question, and I'm not trying to sidestep giving you a direct answer, but I would need to know more of what that really means and what that looks like as a community. And, you know, certainly, you know, we're gonna be mindful of, you know, families and individuals and, you know, certainly don't wanna see, you know, families torn apart in an event that, you know, it gets, you know, gets that part. I just don't know enough about, you know, what a sanctuary city looks like. You know, what qualifies a city to be, you know, as a sanctuary? And then, you know, what is our role in city governing in that regard? You know, the policing and the enforcing of it and what that looks like. I don't know enough about it. You know, certainly, it's not something that we have here or in and around us. And, you know, before I wanna answer that question, I need to know more about what it looks like. I think we're a country that welcomes immigrants and have for three hundred years or more. And, you know, I think that we'll always continue to be that country that welcomes immigrants coming from our countries. And the goal, I think, for all of them is to become citizens. That's why they're coming here. They wanna live, you know, the American dream, if that's what their dream is. And so, we have to do everything we can to make sure that they have the opportunities to do that. But as far as, you know, supporting us as being designated a sanctuary city, I don't know exactly what that, what that means.
I think that question.
Yeah, you know, I think a few things. My parents actually immigrated to this country and I went through the long process of getting citizenship. It is incredibly difficult and it's probably more so now. So, for me, it was five trips to the INS office in St. Paul. You pay hundreds of dollars before you know, before you get any knowledge of whether you're gonna be granted citizenship.
you, you know, before you get any knowledge of whether you're going to be granted citizenship. You take tests, you do interviews, you do background, the whole thing.
That's sort of like getting fees to do something in Eau Claire.
Yeah, what I've said is that, you don't know if you're going to, you don't know if you're going to, you don't know if you're going to. So what I've said is that if everyone, if everyone in our country had to become a citizen, go through the process, we only have 5% of us, we only have 5% citizenship in this, in this country. So it's hard and it's difficult process. As soon as, yeah, you have, so anyway, the, the, the bottom line though is I've talked about how we need to be welcoming. And what I'm talking about is the fact that, you know, we're, we're, our country is made up of folks who want, you know, to be a part of this, this experience and live a part of this, be part of this democracy. And, you know, it, to, to think that it's always going to be a smooth transition, it, it is, is not true. And it wasn't for me, it wasn't for my family, but, you know, I had an opportunity to, to have my community invest in me, good schools, good public schools and, and make something of myself. And I, and I feel like we, we ought to be giving those opportunities. And that's what I, when I talk about a welcoming community, it's, it's how do we make sure that people know and feel welcome?
So that's if they're illegal or illegal?
Well, here's the thing is, well, and here's the thing is that, and we may have disagreements about working towards citizenship and what does that look like if someone's here illegally? If they're working in, in our restaurants, they're working on our farms, they're picking our vegetables, you know, is there a pathway or not? Like those are discussions I think that are probably outside the bounds of this, you know, of this conversation. But in terms of law enforcement, I can say that our local law enforcement, our police, you know, they have, they have very strong ties to both our, you know, Hispanic and our Muslim populations that are here. And there's a, there's a huge amount of trust and I think that's one of the things that matters most. Because we don't need to talk about sanctuary or not, we need to talk about is there a trust with law enforcement? Because it, it impacts our schools, it impacts our businesses and so forth. And, and there are ICE rates in our community, there's ICE rates that are happening in other, in other, in other communities around, around Eau Claire. And what is the role of local law enforcement? And I'm proud to say that our local law enforcement has actually been building a trust with our community of immigrants. And so, and so, you know, to me, that's what matters most is are we welcoming, are we making sure that we're giving opportunity for, for folks, you know, first and foremost? And we may have disagreements about citizenship and the pathway to citizenship and that's okay, but I hope that we continue to be welcoming.
Any other questions? I want to thank both, both candidates are coming. We're, we're lucky as a city to have two strong candidates and good luck to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.